Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the March 10th State Board of Education meeting. We're glad to see you. We're enjoying spring today and winter tomorrow. So glad that some of you are going to be able to get home safely, I think, before hopefully the bad weather starts. So we're glad you're here this morning. And I just wanted to take this opportunity. I don't know if all of you realize, but it seems like, or it not seems like, it was two years ago today that we were in a state board of education meeting and we started hearing about the first COVID cases. And education Arkansas changed from that day on. And I just didn't want to let the day go by without recognizing the stress that happened, the loss that happened. So many lost friends and coworkers and family members. The adjustments that educators had to make, that parents had to make, that students had to make, learning laws, just all the different things that happened over these last two years were difficult and stressful things. But it was also an opportunity for us in Arkansas to show how resilient we are, to show how innovative we are, because so many across the state, in districts and in school buildings and in classrooms stepped up and just made a way for students to keep getting the education that they need. And I just want it from, you know, the governor's office, from the health department, to the people and staff here at the department, and then all the ones at the districts that worked so hard these last two years. I want to say thank you. Thank you for all that you did and are continuing to do as we deal with this. And hopefully, we're going to see things get better as it seems. But I just wanted to say thank you for the past two years. When it started that day, you know, in my mind, I thought it was going to be like the flu that we would have at school. We'd shut down for two weeks, then everything would be back to normal. Well, here it is, two years. And so, you know, I just want to take this opportunity to say thank you. Thank you for all of your hard work. And so that's on my mind today as we go into our moment of silence. And so I just want to, I think this is a thankful day. You know, thankful for you, thankful for all the people around the state that worked so hard, and the students, and just that all that has been done. So join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. I don't have any recognitions on my agenda here. So we will move on to the next part. Do we have any changes to the agenda that anyone wants to? Okay. So we are to the consent agenda. Does anyone have a comment or a question about any item on the consent agenda? Dr. Moore? No? Okay. Anyone? All right. Then we are ready for a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. We have a motion by Dr. Moore.
I'll second.
Seconded by Dr. Rankin. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Okay. We'll move on to our action agenda. And the first item is standards for accreditation waivers. Mr. Sutherland.
So Matthew Sutherland, Standards and System Support Interim Charter Director. So consideration of Sheridan School District request for a standards for accreditation waiver. Sheridan is requesting a standards for accreditation waiver for the 2021-2022 academic year. They're experiencing an overage for sixth grade art and music wheel. And the overage is for three students receiving special education services, and they are accompanied by a paraprofessional.
Do we have any discussion on the Sheridan School District request waiver? Any questions? Okay. All right. Ms. McFetrich?
Can we get, oh, excuse me. I'm usually not loud enough. Are these special ed students, how severe are their needs? And is, are they together with one para pro? Are they at separate times? Do we know?
I know that they're together with one para pro.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if Sheridan is on to answer any questions.
Is there anyone from Sheridan on the Zoom?
Yes, ma'am.
Who am I speaking to?
This is Angie Holloman. I am the School System Administrator and Cycle Coordinator. And also, Dr. Guest, our superintendent is here with me also.
Good morning.
Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning. Do you feel like one para pro is enough for your teacher in the classroom? Is that enough support? Can you just talk to that, please?
Yes, ma'am. We, those three are actually self-contained students. And one is mobile and verbal, and the other one is non-verbal and in a wheelchair. So the para does go with them to that class of art and music. It is a wheel class that goes Monday through Friday. So, you know, one day they're in wheel of music, one day a wheel of art.
Okay. So one para pro covers all three students? And that's enough support for the classroom teacher, you feel?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. We are ready for a motion for the Sheridan accreditation waiver. Do we need to make more, have more discussion?
I'll move to approve.
Okay. We have a motion by Dr. Moore to approve the waiver.
I'll second.
Seconded by, was that Ms. Woods?
Yes.
Okay. Seconded by Ms. Woods. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Thank you, Sheridan, for joining us and answering our questions.
Thank you.
So the next item is Mayflower School District is requesting a standards for accreditation waiver for class size for the 2021-2022 school year. Mayflower's sixth grade class has been either at or above the class size limit of 28 students multiple times throughout the 2021-2022 academic year. And the district does not anticipate needing the waiver beyond this school year.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the Mayflower request?
I just had one quick question, to make sure I read it right. So they're actually, as of like February the 7th, they're not over their current classroom size, correct? They're just basically asking for this in anticipation because it has waffled back and forth?
Right. They've had multiple fluctuations throughout the year.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I understood that. Thank you.
Go ahead. When we're approving sixth grade? Sixth grade is not typically all in, they have multiple teachers. So is this approved for all subject areas?
That would be my understanding of it, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions about Mayflower? Okay. I think we're ready for a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Okay. We have a motion by Ms. Woods.
I'll second.
Seconded.
Seconded, I think I heard Ms. McFetrich first. So seconded by Ms. McFetrich. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes.
Okay. So on the next item, I've gotten communication that currently Shirley School District is not over the limit, but Ms. Tyreen Garner is here. And it's just so that basically if they end up getting another student or there is any fluctuation, then that will be changed. But Shirley School District is requesting a standards for accreditation waiver for the district's kindergarten class. The class size is 23 with a halftime paraprofessional. This number places the district, a total of one student, over the 22-student limit with a halftime paraprofessional. But as I said, now they are below that number.
So they have 22 now, or?
They are, they're at 20 actually, right now.
Do they still have the halftime para?
I'm not sure. Ms. Garner could probably answer that question for us.
Ms. Garner.
There are two paras that go in there part of the day. One for morning activity and one for the afternoon. But we are at 20 now. We're a very mobile district. We had two enroll in the middle of the last ice storm. And since we've got back in school, now we have 20 in kindergarten, but we still have the para.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Shirley District?
I do.
Dr. Rankin?
I was just curious. You made a statement in here that students often enroll in the kindergarten at this time of the year and then are gone within two weeks. So it looks like a trend line. I just wondered if you could speak to that just a little bit?
I didn't hear that question, but I think she said, is it a trend for people to enroll?
And they've gone within the two weeks. I just noticed that was in your, in your request.
Yes, ma'am. It does happen here, especially around spring break, a lot. Grandparents get their grandkids and things get settled back home and they go back. It's a situation that does occur in Shirley quite often.
Any other questions or discussion on Shirley District? Okay. We're ready for a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Okay. All right. We have a motion to approve by Dr. Rankin and seconded by Mr. Henderson. I'm going to do it again. I did it last month, didn't I? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes. Before you leave, Mr. Sutherland, and I just wanted to ask a question. Just in past years, it didn't seem like we had a lot of these standard waivers that would come up. But in the last year or so, every year, we're having several come up. What's causing that?
I think part of it is staffing. I think, you know, when you look at the teacher shortage, you're seeing that there's not as many teachers to teach. They can't hire qualified professionals to teach in the classroom. And so therefore, they have to have larger class sizes. And they're cutting it a lot closer, you know, when they schedule for the year. So then, you know, they end up going over really easily.
Okay. That makes sense. I wondered if it was also the new tool that you're using for districts to keep up with their stuff? If maybe things were coming on our radar now that might not have come on our radar before?
I think that's quite possible, too. You know, because we're able to catch it. As soon as they go over, we got it the next day.
Okay.
And so, you know, we're able to monitor that a whole lot more effectively.
And then what, so our monitoring tool is better also?
Yes. Yes, much.
Okay. All right.
I'll add to that, too. I definitely want to say that I think COVID has impacted that in the last two years. School districts have been very unsure about their student population, how many students are on site, off site. So I think that has also been an impact. And we have seen an increase in those waiver requests.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Sutherland. All right. So we're going to move on to our 1240 request. Ms. Frehno.
Thank you and good morning, Lori Frehno. The first Act 1240 waiver request we have is from the Jacksonville North Plaski School District. We have Dr. Jeremy Oa on Zoom today to answer any questions you might have. The district is requesting a waiver of class size and teaching load at its Jacksonville High School only to support a student internship program in physical science.
Welcome, Dr. Oa.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning. Good to see you this morning. We'll see if anyone has a question for you. Anyone over here on my left have a question? Okay. Dr. Moore?
That's okay. Good morning. I wanted to inquire, so this program to hire this intern, has this intern been in the school this whole year? Or will they start right now in the semester?
No, ma'am. In all transparency, the interns started in January, and we had to get the paperwork ready. And we missed the deadline in February to submit it to you all. But we've had to have, we had Pearson, we had a long-term sub. We just could not fill that physical science position. And so we started late fall, reaching out to the local educational preparation providers. And after talking with Dean Grove Scott at UCA, she shared that she had an intern who was a physical science major, but had an issue with being able to work and fulfill his internship. And so I explained to her that we had a position and that we would be willing to submit a waiver for that teacher so we could actually have an individual who have had, who has had the content background and would have needed the internship experience as well. And to be honest, also as an effort to possibly recruit him long-term, even after he completes the program this year. And so we were trying to, our goal was to align it with the newly formed teacher residency program. But because Jacksonville, we did not have the teacher, the 1240 waiver. Hence, the reason why we submitted this waiver, so that we could keep him in the classroom and potentially hire him for next year as a full-time teacher.
Okay. That makes sense. I know we have seen this case in other districts as well. But wanted to check on, in this case, the intern is being compensated?
Yes, ma'am. He would, if granted this waiver, we would hope to, our goal was to have him teacher of record, so he would be on our teacher salary schedule.
Okay. And then the support that they're getting in the application, there's a lead teacher. Can you speak a little bit more to that support?
Yes, ma'am. Not only just the lead teacher, the lead science teacher provides that support on a daily basis. Our school administration, Mrs. Biggs, our high school principal, as well as the assistant principal that oversees that particular grade level, because he teaches physical science. They're in there to support him. But we also have a PLC coach that goes in. And the teacher intern is part of the collaborative team as well. And so he continues to get that support, not only from the school staff, but also from the district curriculum instruction staff, as well as our educational cooperative from Liberty Mills. But the actual college, Dean Grove Scott's staff also comes and supports him, not only as part of the internship program, but because he's the teacher of record, he receives the additional support in the content, but as well as classroom management and just his transition as a student to the teacher of record. And so that's been going well. He has adjusted, Mrs. Biggs says. He's doing great rapport with the students, with our scholars. And so all is well for now. And so we just want to make sure that we can continue forward with it.
Okay. That's great. I'm glad there's additional support from both you all and the college. Thank you for sharing.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions over here? Ms. Henderson? Is opposed? Okay. Online, Ms. Dean or Ms. Woods?
No questions.
All right. Thank you. All right. So if there's no more discussion, I think we're ready for a motion on Jacksonville North Plaski.
I'll make the motion to approve Jacksonville North Plaski request.
Okay.
Seconded.
Okay. Seconded by, a motion was made by Ms. McFetrich, seconded by Ms. Dean. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Brinkley School District.
Thank you. The Brinkley School District also submitted a request for an Act 1240 waiver. They are seeking to waive teacher licensure, library media specialist licensure, and instructional day through the 2025-26 school year. Dr. Brenda Poole from the district is here to answer any questions you might have.
Welcome, Dr. Poole. Oh, you are here. I was looking for you on the screen.
No, ma'am. We're here.
Glad you're here. Okay. Welcome. Do you have any sort of a presentation you want to make? Or comments you want to make? Or wait for questions?
Just waiver questions. We are seeking a waiver for, like you said, the Act 1240 waiver teachers. We really need that. That has been instrumental in helping us to meet standards and making sure we have teachers in the classroom. We've had some challenges in locating and finding certified teachers. So that has been instrumental, and we need that till we can get a teacher recruitment plan in place. And we've been working on that in conjunction with Ms. Kelsey Riley at the co-op, who's a retention specialist there. And so also, we're applying for the library media specialists. I have a certified teacher. She's a history teacher who went back to school to get that license. And she keeps missing a test by one point. She's not eligible for the alternate assessment plan because she is not a first-time licensure person. And so I was told that she would have to continue to take that test. And that teacher has told me she has, will not continue to take that test. So we don't have a certified person. She's a certified teacher, but not a certified library media specialist person. So we're working through those challenges of trying to locate someone for next year and have already posted that position. And even trying to look in-house to see if it's someone else who would want to step up and be the library media specialist for the district. We're also seeking the waiver for instructional time. We have, over the last four and a half years, we've been having the, our early release on Wednesdays where we have PLC time. This time has been instrumental in helping us to be able to provide that support for the teachers that they need, especially our Act 1240 waiver, our novice teachers, and getting them the PD. We are a small school district, and we have a lot of singletons. So they don't have common planning time, which poses a challenge when we can get those teachers and teams to be able to meet. And so we have used that time to make sure that core instruction is in place, as well as getting them the foundation and fundamental skills that they need. So every waiver we are asking, we really need.
Okay. We'll see what questions that we have. Dr. Moore?
I haven't seen that. Sorry. You're just handy. No, thank you for making the drive and coming up here today. It's my understanding you all have held this Act 1240 waiver. You said you've hired 10 teachers under the waiver. What types of, and you're working with a co-op, but it sounds like only a few of them are, continue to be in the district. What kind of challenges do you see? Why are they leaving? And do y'all have better hope for the future that when you're hiring them, they're going to be able to get the certification and stay?
The challenges that we're seeing is that some of them are commuting in. We have challenging with housing in Brinkley. And I talked to some of the local people about prioritizing housing for teachers there. There's not a lot of rental housing options in Brinkley. So it's like you buy or you commute in. Everyone is not a commuter. And I'm seeing some of those challenges. I had a teacher who quit in December. She was an agrar teacher. That's because she was commuting. She was commuting an hour and 15 minutes in. I've had some that has bought traveling trailers. And that works out for a while, but no one wants to live in a trailer forever. And so we've, like I say, talked to the community, tell them we need more housing here in Brinkley, prioritize for our teaching staff. And so that's something that we're working through. And quite frankly, working in Arkansas Delta is a challenge. I grew up in the Delta, so I understand the challenges here. My entire career has been in the Delta. I'm invested. And when people come in, there's a reality check for a lot of them. So we try to make sure that when we're hiring people, we're hiring a good fit. And I'm very transparent in the type of students that we have, the community that you would be working in. And so when they get there, it's like, hmm, this wasn't what I expected. But I'm like, this is what you were told when you were hired in, so.
What type of supports in-house do y'all have? Are they mentor teachers and that type of thing?
Yes. They are all the sign, Marigold teachers in the district, and that is ran through the co-op. They also go to the co-op for new teacher trainings. And like I say, teachers there, one thing I can say about the staff that has been in Brinkley for a while is like a family. We all pull together and we help out where there is a need. I even work with some of the teachers. I'm very hands-on with instruction. So I'm working with them. Like I said, pre-pandemic, I was actually leading a group of teachers through the process because we noticed that with the ALPA program and the questions that are being asked of the teachers that are not, the teachers are more like National Guard questions. And I'm National Guard certified, so I've been trying to help them work through that process with the ALPA program. And I would meet with them once a month, all my 1240 and my new teachers, to try to make sure that they was matriculating through that process.
Okay. That's great. Thank you for your leadership. I'll go ahead, if it's okay, and ask on the instructional day, is that a waiver y'all previously held?
We have.
Okay. And so you, for how many years have y'all done that early, really?
Pretty much the same time. When we got all our waivers, four and a half years.
Okay. I, to be transparent, I feel that we don't need to be lowering the number of hours students are in school. Has there been any talk about additionally adding hours on other days to make up that time? Or why are you choosing not to make up that student time?
Well, we have an after-school program. And those students that are most, that needs that intensive instruction, most of those students are in that after-school program. So that after-school program continues to go on, even when we have in that early release, that one day a week on those Wednesdays. We have talked about maybe paying teachers to be able to stay a little later and make it up that way. We have looked at the option, would we, do we want to extend each day in order to make up that time? But we make sure that there's a process in place that those students who need to be in the after-school program are there. And we have interventions and things built in at the end of day to monitor the students.
Okay. Was there conversation about adding with your, adding that time on other days?
Yes. We have talked about that for the upcoming school year.
Okay. When will that decision be made?
Oh, soon.
Okay. It's just hard to think through approving minus that when there is, you know, some flexibility now with the way the calendar could be laid out to add those hours on other days.
Yes, ma'am. We are seriously talking about doing that, so.
Okay. I'll let someone else ask questions, but thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. McFetrich?
I'm also not very comfortable losing student time. How many students do you have going into your after-school program?
On average, daily 55 to 85 students.
Okay. And is that an educational time for them as well? Do you do tutoring and?
They are receiving tutoring. They're receiving homework help, and they're receiving enrichment.
Okay. And then how long do they, are they usually in the after-school program?
Two hours.
Two hours. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Rankin?
I share the concerns of Dr. Moore and Ms. McFetrich on cutting in on student instructional time. However, I also understand the battle you're in on trying to build community among your teachers, especially if there are many commuting in from out of town and they're not seeing each other outside of those school hours. I know that collaboration time is important, and I understand that challenge that you are facing as an administrator. I guess my question might be for the department more. It makes my heart sick to hear that we have lost a potential teacher for one point on the praxis. I mean, my heart just sinks to the floor when I hear that. After seeing what this school has done, the mentoring efforts that they have put in place, the collaborative efforts that are going on to try to get this certified teacher, not necessarily qualified, but certified, probably qualified to be in there, but certified, that's the sticking point. So I'd love to just hear from the department, is there anything that we can do for those teachers that are literally on the cusp of a career breaking? One point? It just makes me sad.
I actually wrote it, literally wrote it down on my notes over here. Library media specialist, one point, star beside it. Because you're right, those are pieces that we need to be looking at. Ms. Saraceni is not here today, and she would be the expert in that area. I do know that in some areas on the praxis, especially like in the reading test I do know that in some areas on the praxis, especially like in the reading test and some of those, in the math areas, we do provide tutoring and support. We have specialists who are assisting people to try to get the score they needed. I'm not sure that we have anything like that for library media. And I know that they've done some licensure rules as far as some flexibility and stuff, but that, that assessment piece is pretty, pretty cut and dry. But I will, after this meeting, follow up with that department and Ms. Saraceni and specifically look at this.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want you to know, we, we hear your challenges that you are facing and, you know, we're pulling for you because it, we, we want you to always feel the freedom to come and share your challenges that you're having as we're trying to, to work through some of these issues. So that was my, was my.
Dr. Hill?
Well, I'm, I know I talked about this too much and I'm not, she's in the foxhole fighting. We're here trying to help. So I'm with you, wanting to make sure that we can give her the support that she needs to help in the things that we think are deficiencies rather than say yes, no. What can we do to supply the artillery to help her fight this battle rather than just tell her no and yes? I don't think we help her. She's there every day. She's in, she's fighting this battle. And so this is what she says she needs. She's there Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, seeing the babies every day. Teacher burnout, all the things that can happen. So I hope that we as a department can go and support what we think she needs and make sure she can do it. Because if she doesn't have the staff and personnel to do what we say she needs to do, that's a deficiency. If the kids can't get there because the teachers are not there, that's a problem. So we have to be real careful about directing policy without support to be able to make sure we can do what she, what we want her to do. So as a department, I'm glad you brought that up. Let's, let's, let's get boots, boots on the ground. Let's go help this Brinkley do what we want to be doing rather than sit here and say no, yes, and go do it. And she's struggling. That's not acceptable. Any stretch of the imagination, if I can do anything to help you, you have my full support. Churches, whatever we need to do, you have support to make sure that happens because I know deep in your heart, you desire to see those students achieve. You're a product of the environment. You grew up in the Delta. You don't have to be there.
You don't have to be there.
And I applaud you for being there. And I will do anything I can to support you to help those babies, keep them being a pipeline prisoner.
Ms. Dean, did you have a question?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Woods? Mr. Henderson?
I'd just like to say that I commend you for your efforts and everything that you're doing. And I share the same concerns and interest as my colleagues to do whatever they need. Just continue to put it out there so we can help you out.
Ms. Post?
I did have a couple of questions on this one. Going back to the library media specialist, if, if somehow or another we could figure out this one point thing, would she be willing to, to take the position of the library media specialist for her district?
Yes, ma'am. I think she would. Like I say, she's a certified history teacher, but she was just like, I'm not putting any more time in it. Missed about one point and so she's like, I'm done with it.
Yeah. And so maybe if we did that waiver for one year, do we kind of get this problem researched and worked out, maybe? Would that be something the department might be able to work on?
Yeah. And I don't think we have any objections to the waiver for the library media specialist. I mean, that, this is an avenue for them to fulfill and meet the need. So if this board is okay with her not having her praxis and they want to do the waiver for them for a library media specialist, I don't think we have any objections to that.
She could just step right into the position.
Right. And during this time period, no matter what, we, we can step in and, she's serving as library media specialist now, correct? And she's serving under that position with the waiver? And the waiver is expiring, so you're here today to say, please extend this waiver for us. And we don't have any objections to that.
Okay. So maybe we can get this worked out?
Right. So within the year, if she hasn't, I mean, so if you extend the library media specialist for a year or two years, that, that would be at your pleasure.
Okay. All right. And my, my other question is, is on the instructional day. And I know COVID has had issue, you know, part of the issues on, things happening have, have been due to COVID. But, you know, the, the waiver has been in, in place for almost five years and you've had early release where, where students have had less time in, in class or in instructional, in just basic instruction. And I'm looking at results, you know, as far as results that, that we can go and look at data and, and data is not showing progress, you know? And so, you know, if we're doing something, is it making a difference? Do you see where my problem is, is with this? You know, and because of the new legislation that we have, you know, you can rearrange your days, you know, if you want to have an early dismissal on Thursdays, you know, for this, then add a few minutes each, each of the other days so we're not losing instructional time with, with students, you know? That's my, my problem, you know? I think you can still do it. And I came from a, a small school, so I understand your problem with, you know, one teacher teaching, you know, it's hard for them to talk to, to, to other teachers. But, but I think there are districts around the state that are, are doing things effectively rather than losing instructional time. You know, I go back to something that Ms. Zook, I always talked about was let's, let's don't lose instructional time. If we've, we've got to do professional development and different other things, let's, let's don't lose time with students. And, you know, I, I kind of have to go with that too because I think that's being wise with our time, you know, of making sure that we, we get the most from our students and with our students. And, and because of, I'm looking at the data, you know, it's, you're, you've got a ways to go, you know? And, and it's not supporting that. And so that's my, my issue with that. Ms. Kaufman, did you have some comments maybe from the department?
Well, Deborah Kaufman, Department of Ed. We will be happy to work with Ms. Poole if we, if you feel comfortable giving her the waiver for a year or for two. Now with the four calendar options, we will be happy to work with her, help her work through that, pick out the one that's best suited to her district. Also regarding teacher licensure, we now have a requirement for a recruitment retention plan that's coming up. So we'll be happy to bring in our partners with educator effectiveness and licensure to work with Ms. Poole and make sure that we've got a good solid plan so that when she comes back to you at a later time, if needed, that we would bring that updated information with her.
Okay. So, so maybe do the instructional day for one or two years and let the department work, help, help them work through a plan that might be effective?
Right. She might not even need a waiver for that, after that.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right. So I think we probably need to take each one of these, is there any more discussion or questions on this?
I would like to say something else as far as the progress of the students. One thing that we have been working on in our district is the cultural low expectation, not only from the student standpoint, but the parent's standpoint. I did focus groups with my students after their assessment to see what happened because I had teachers to report that students just went in and click, click, click and didn't take the assessment serious. That is a school culture problem among the students. And that is something that we have been working through. I talked to my students and I said that you undid all the work that your teachers have done. So in defense of my teachers, they are working really hard. But that is also a challenge that we're trying to overcome. I talked to those students and those students told me that they did exactly what the teacher said. We went in and we clicked, clicked, clicked. I wanted it to be done. I didn't like who I was in the room with. The proctor wasn't there. So I wanted to make sure that we're clear that teachers are working really hard, but we're working through some challenges with those students, why they think it's okay to click, 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 and your name is on that assessment.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you for that insight. Ms. Ms. Brino, would it be okay if we took each one of these separately and?
Yes, that's probably the best idea since you're discussing them so separately. And also although Ms. Kaufman said, it's just for clarification, I believe it's the department's position that the teacher licensure waiver should only be recommend, is only for one year at this juncture.
So a teacher licensure is recommended for one year?
That is what the department recommends.
And then the library media, we're thinking, Ms. Smith, you helped me out on time period, on what you're thinking on library media?
Yeah. I mean, I don't think we had much concern about the library media waiver request. And so the original request was for through the 25, 26 school year.
So it was five years?
So it was a five-year one. They do have someone who has taken the praxis one point away. You may want to look at it for two or, I mean, you may want to compare, put it with whatever you do for the teacher licensure one. We're, we're going to work with them.
Okay.
I mean, we're, we're going to work with them. We recognize that there is a shortage. We recognize that they're working with that. So whether the library media specialist waiver and the teacher licensure waiver, they're very similar because you're looking at waiving licensing requirements. So we're going to work with them either way. On the instructional day, there's lots of, you know, we've had some legislative changes. We're expecting legislative changes as far as during the session on, you know, start dates, piece was repealed. We've got different calendar options out there. There's different hours versus minutes versus, I mean, so we're expecting legislative changes to happen in January. So that instructional day one probably just needs to be the one year while we assist with the calendar piece on that. It's not that we don't think they need collaborative time with their teachers. We've seen that to be beneficial. But we do want to accept the minimum expectation for instruction is each day and work with them to do that. So on the licensure piece, Lori, on the one year for teacher licensure, was that coming from the teaching licensure department? I want to make sure that I was clear on that one.
I'm sorry.
For the one year on the teacher licensure, did that come from the licensure department that they were recommending one year?
I am not sure where that came from in the depart, it's just a DZ recommendation.
Okay. Deb, do you have any background on that?
The conversation around the teacher licensure waiver was that we put the, give them time to put their recruitment retention plan into place and then bring that back with more data to determine, do they need long-term waivers or is the recruitment retention plan going to solve their issues?
The, it, make sure I understand because we're going to pass those rules this afternoon. I'm, I'm saying, we vote on that. Let me say that again. We vote on those rules this afternoon, but if those rules pass this afternoon, then they have to have that recruitment plan in place by August 1st. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe that is correct. We have it on our website checklist, so we'll be ready.
Okay. All right. So, so if they had that, if they, we had the one year, then you would, you know, have that recruitment plan in place by beginning of school next year, then have all next school year to work through those problems. And then if they needed, they could come back in the spring.
And, and we're, you know, by next spring, when we would come back with Ms. Poole, we'll have more information to see what's working short-term, what's working long-term. And to Dr. Hill's point, yes, there's issues in the Delta. And so we're not saying that we wouldn't support waivers. We're just saying we need to do it in the context of having some good solid plans for long-term solutions.
Okay.
So one recommendation I would recommend is not make it for one year, make it through the entire school year. So if we, if you wanted to do it for the entire school year, it would be through the 22, 23 school year. So that would get them through this year and then all the way through next year. And we're not coming back in mid-year trying to figure something out because that's what's happening right now. If you wanted to look at the two-year, then it would be through the 23, 24 school year.
Okay. All right. Is that, is that clear for everyone? Any other discussion? Dr. Moore?
I am echoing that you are setting the policies for your district and you know what's best for you all. I'm still just caught up on why taking away this one hour from students, why can't we just add 20 minutes on the other days? Are there, what does that conversation look like so that we can, you know, confidently say, our board is not lowering the amount of learning that students are seeing?
And I think that.
You'll have to come to the microphone.
I think that some of the challenges that we had is that teachers are commuting in. So when that time's 3:30, they're ready to get on the road and go home. And I think that's a lot of what we are struggling with. Teachers are tired and so.
What are your student contact hours at elementary and high school?
They are from eight to 3:30.
Students are there from eight to 3:30?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then what are teacher contracted hours?
The teachers are there, actually students are there from eight to like 3:20 and the teachers leaving probably another 20 minutes after, after the stage.
Okay. So how many hours a week do students have?
They have a six-hour day.
Okay. So we're, is the requirement, I guess this is for the department, the requirement is 30 hours a week. And so this would now be you have only 29 hours a week.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So that has been our challenge. Like I said, we have people commuting in. They want to get on the road, get home and things like that. And just having been, like I say, even a challenge just to say, let's have a staff meeting. And, you know, you say we haven't been so often. And so it's just been a challenge having people working outside of contractual hours. And so we're looking at optional, maybe trying to send a vice that we'll pay you to be able to do that.
I, I think, and I'm hearing what Deb said, and I don't think anybody's trying to waiver any hours away from the kids. I think what we've asked her to do is to go down and support what would be the best means to produce the results that, that we're trying to get as a board. But what I'm saying for us to legislate for her to do that and, and say, add some time, you're going to go, what I'm here at the department, and make this assessment to help bring back to the recommendation to us. Is that, is that my understanding being correct?
And, and also can I say that my staff and my community has voted on a traditional calendar. We did the stakeholder feedback and the staff feedback and explained all the calendars and the results showed that the community and the teachers wanted a five-day traditional calendar. So we will have to go back and redo all, redo that as well, so.
Yes, Dr. Hill. What I'm saying is we will provide support to Dr. Poole to help her, whatever she needs to work through these issues and give you the best information. She may need long-term waivers. We're just going to have to work through the situations with her in light of the new recruitment retention plans, the light, in light of the new calendar options, in light of the staffing that she's able to achieve. We're just going to have to work through those issues with her and see what are her options. And then what, what will the community support, of course? And then come back with that information for you to see what the long-term.
And Deb, you and I sat in a conference Wednesday, talked about emotional poverty and sometimes the content of longer, how that doesn't, is, am I right?
Yes, sir.
Because just to say that we're in a classroom for somebody in that situation, the expert, Dr. Payne, said that's not always the best way to deliver instruction. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we were on, so you're going to assess what that is, bring that back to us with her to make those recommendations so we will know that we have full content for the decisions we make moving forward.
Will do it.
Thank you.
So I think that we're looking at waivers whenever you're thinking about motions through the end of school years. The end of next school year would be the end of 22, 23. The end of the following school year would be the end of 23, 24. So just, just think about that as, as you're making your motions. Okay? All right. So we'll first look at teacher, the, the waiver for teacher licensure. Do I have a motion on that?
Okay. Dr. Hill, Mr. Henderson, for how, how long or?
One year.
One year? Okay. So that would be the, through the end of the 22, 23 school year? Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Hill? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The next, do we have a comment?
I just couldn't hear Mr. Henderson.
Okay. I'm sorry. I should have repeated it. That's my fault. The motion was for teacher licensure, one-year waiver through the end of the 22, 23 school year. It was, the motion was made by Dr. Henderson, by Mr. Henderson and seconded by Dr. Hill.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments there? The next one is also a licensure issue. It's library media specialist. Do we have a motion there?
Move to approve.
Okay. For, for how long?
Ms. Dean, for how long?
For one year.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion to approve the library media specialist waiver license through the end of the 22, 23 school year. Do we have a, and that motion was made by Ms. Dean. Do we have a second? Seconded by Ms. McFetrich. All in favor? Any opposed? The last one is on the instructional day. Okay, we have a, okay, we have a motion by Ms. McFetrich to approve the waiver for instructional day for, through the end of the 22, 23 school year. Do we have a second? Seconded by Dr. Hill. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, um, Dr. Moore, opposed?
I'm also opposed on that one.
Okay, Ms. Wood is also opposed. So do we need to do a roll call, Ms. Smith, to be sure?
I'm showing Ms. Dean, Ms. McFetrich, Ms. Woods, Ms. Rankin, Coach Hill, Dr. Harold, Mr. um, Mr. Henderson. So I'm showing six yeses.
Six.
So, yeah, it might have made it five. Let me do it again.
Okay, so let's, why don't we do a roll call and make sure we get this one right? Okay? So we're going to do a roll call on this one to be sure we have it correct.
Ms. Smith, will you also turn on your microphone? If that's possible, thank you.
It, it's on, but she's just not quite close enough. We'll get her a little closer.
Okay, Ms. Dean?
Sorry, aye.
Mr. Sutton, not here. Ms. McFetrich?
Yes.
Ms. Woods?
Opposed.
Dr. Rankin?
Yes.
Dr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Dr. Moore?
And I can't hear Dr. Moore either.
It, she voted no. Okay, so we had five, four, and two again, so the motion passes. All right, Dr. Poole, thank you so much for, for, for coming. And I hope you understand that we are doing our best to support you any way that you can. And I know Ms. Kaufman and, and her staff is going to be right there beside you. And then we're going to get Ms. Saracini on this library media specialist issue. And so whatever you need, I, I think Dr. Hill said it very well, we want to support you, okay? It may not seem that way to you this morning, okay? But let me assure you that we are wanting to do what's best for your district and your students and, and just to have the best outcome possible. So, uh, please let us know when you need things and let the people here at the department know because we are here to support you.
Thanks so much.
All right. We are to the charter authorizing panel decisions. Mr. Sutherland.
All right, Matthew Sutherland, Coordinator of Standard System Support, Interim Charter Director. Uh, the first item is actually the open enrollment charter application. Uh, the only changes to the application this year was the addition of a waiver list so that districts would be able to know what the waiver topics were so that we can start to get a consistent set of waiver topics and make sure that all of our records are correct.
That was smart, yes. Any discussion on the application? Okay, then we are ready for a motion? Okay, you have a motion by Dr. Moore to approve the application?
I'll second.
Seconded by Dr. Rankin. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
All right, the next item is actually consideration of Haas Hall's five-year charter renewal with amendment requests. Um, the charter is requesting a five-year renewal of the charter with all existing waivers for Haas Hall Academy, Haas Hall at Delane, Haas Hall Academy Jones Center, and Haas Hall Bentonville. The additional, the addition of a new site for grades seven through 12 in Fort Smith and an increase in enrollment cap by 500 to accommodate the Fort Smith campus students.
We'll see if you have any questions or discussion. Uh, we'll start with Ms. Dean. Do you have any questions about Haas Hall?
No.
Ms. Woods? Ms. Post? I know it's going, the, it's going up in your area in Fort Smith. Any questions or comments?
I just haven't heard a lot about this. So if, I think Haas Hall's on the Zoom. I would, I would love to hear what drew them to Fort Smith um, and kind of their vision for what they're going to bring to the River Valley.
Okay, someone from Haas Hall can speak to the Fort Smith site?
Morning, my name is Martin Shapmar. I'm the founder of Haas Hall Academy.
Welcome, Dr. Shapmar.
I'm sorry?
Welcome.
Oh, thank you. We're excited about the opportunity to, to come to the beautiful city of Fort Smith. Uh, we were asked to have a partnership with the medical school there. So our scholars will be ones that hopefully will major in medicine once they graduate from Haas Hall. The partnership is going to be one that we have a lovely facility. It's going to be built out for us. Um, it's just perfect, it's a perfect storm for Haas Hall.
Okay. Mr. Henderson? Okay. Dr. Moore? Ms. McFetrich? Dr. Rankin? Dr. Hill? All right. If there's no other discussion or questions, then remember our motion is to review or not review.
I move to not review.
Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Rankin to not review.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Hill. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. We are looking forward to hearing from you again about some successes.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
You too. All right.
All right. The next item is consideration of premier high, high school Fort Smith's amendment request. The charter is requesting to locate its school within a thousand feet of a Dollar General store which has an off-premise beer and wine consumption license. The alcohol beverage control board provided a letter to the charter authorizing panel concerning this matter and the amendment was approved.
I think this is a first. I don't remember ever doing this before.
Yeah, I don't think that it's ever happened before.
Yeah, okay. Any questions or discussion on this one?
So because this is an off-premise liquor sale, it makes it, I'm sorry, it makes it legal then?
Correct.
So we're, we're good with this then?
Yeah, we, we did our due diligence with this one and, and the alcohol board actually provided the letter which stated that it is, it is within the law to do that and it doesn't impact the Dollar General either in terms of their license.
Okay. Yes, I appreciate you going the extra mile on that, so, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we ready for a motion? It would be review or not review still, wouldn't it? Okay.
I move to not review.
Okay, and we have a motion by Ms. Dean not to review?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. McFetrich? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
All right, the next is consideration of premier Little Rock amendment request. Uh, the charter is requesting an increase in enrollment cap to 600 to create a new district, premier high schools of Arkansas, to merge the charters under the new district. Uh, it'll be premier high school of Little Rock and premier high school of Fort Smith. And then there would be the addition of an expansion campus which would be in Texarkana.
Is there not going to be a, a campus in Jonesboro? Because that was in the, in the application.
Originally it was, but then it was amended at the, the last minute.
So it's not going to be a campus at Jonesboro?
Not, not at this point in time.
Okay. All right, we'll see if we have any questions. Ms. Woods? Ms. Dean? Dr. Hill? Dr. Rankin? Ms. McFetrich? Dr. Moore?
I just had the same question. So just to be clear, Little Rock and Fort Smith exists now and Texarkana is being added.
Well, so Fort Smith was just approved. In terms of their amendment, that was the last one. And so then they're going to come up under this premier high schools of Arkansas.
Okay.
And so then Little Rock will be under there as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Henderson? Ms. Post? All right, so you know, go ahead.
Does the charter, premier charter in Springdale, under their umbrella? You didn't mention that.
So they are going to be standalone. They have some grants where they're required to stay as standalone. And then, once those timeout, then they will come underneath. They'll, they'll do an amendment request for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussions?
Make the motion not to review.
Okay, we have a motion not to review by Ms. McFetrich. Seconded by Mr. Henderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Well, it is 11 o'clock and my agenda says it should be 1 o'clock by now. But, uh, if there is no objections from the department, we're going to move on to the afternoon agenda. Would that be okay? Okay, all right, so we're going to move on because I think our next ones are rules. So, Ms. Frino.
Good morning, again. Um, these rules, the website, these are the rules governing documents posted to school district and education service cooperative websites. These are the rules that Ms. Newton referred to today. They, um, you, they are before you for final approval. And if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Do we have any questions on these rules governing documents posted to school districts' websites? Dr. Moore?
Yes, I did just have a question on the calendar, just to make sure I better understand. So the, if a district chooses to do an alternative calendar, that doesn't have to be approved by our board. That is just something that their local board approves.
That is correct. It does not have to be approved by our board. But I am going to turn to Ms. Kaufman just to make positive. Mr. Sutherland, the alternate calendar does not have to be approved by our state board, only their own local board. That's what I thought, but.
Okay, and so the department will be, obviously be monitoring if an event of something, you know, if they fall under the minimum requirement of hours?
The, the department will be monitoring the alternative calendar, yes. And, you know, the rules just provide that they have to be posted. The alternative calendar has to be posted by a certain date.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on these rules? And this is final approval. Okay, hearing no more questions, we're ready for a motion?
I'll move to approve.
A motion by Dr. Moore to approve the rules?
I'll second.
Seconded by Dr. Rankin. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Okay, the next set of rules are the, the division of elementary and secondary education and state board of nursing rules governing administration of insulin, glucagon, and medication for adrenal insufficiency or adrenal crisis to Arkansas public school students. These rules went out for public comment at which, once the governor's office approved them, we provided them to the nursing board. They reviewed them. Um, they had been, we had been in contact with them the entire time. The nursing board is going to meet in April to approve these, the final version of these rules, the version that has the public comments incorporated because they were so minimal. We don't expect there will be any, any issue there and then they will be moving on to ALC rule subcommittee. So what we're asking you to do today is approve these rules, give final approval to these rules.
Okay. All right, do we have any discussion on these rules? Okay, doesn't look like we have any questions or discussion. We're ready for a motion? Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Moore to approve the nursing rules? Seconded by Ms. McFetrich. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Okay, and the next set of rules are the rules governing eye and vision screening report in Arkansas public schools. These rules also are before you for final approval today. If you have any questions, happy to answer them.
All right, we'll see if you have any questions. Anyone online have a question on vision and screening rules? Okay, anyone here? Okay, no questions or discussions? We're ready for a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Dr. Rankin made a motion to approve the rules governing eye and vision screening? Seconded by Mr. Henderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, so now we are to rules governing public charter schools. Ms. James?
My name is Whitney James with the department. The state board approved the DZ rules governing public charter schools on December 29th, 2021 for release for public comment pending governor's office approval. The rules were approved by the governor's office on January 13th of 2022 and were released for public comment. Uh, comments were received and non-substantive changes were made. Um, I do want to point out that since we have learned that we will not have an ALC rule subcommittee meeting in March, we may need to change the effective date on the rules to possibly, um, April or May. So that, I'm not sure if that was reflected on the copy that you received, but just to make you aware of that. Um, but we are requesting the board's final approval of these rules.
That date cha, change could be something that you could just take care of in-house and?
Yes, ma'am. It will not be a substantive change. It's just a date that we may have to add after, after the approval.
Okay, all right. Okay, we'll see if we have any questions. Anyone on my left have a question? Over here on my right? Anyone online have a question? All right, so we are, um, needing a motion for a final approval for the rules governing public charter schools.
To approve?
Have a motion by Dr. Moore? Seconded by Ms. McFetrich. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay.
I believe I'm next on the.
Yes, you are.
On the list. The next item is, uh, we're requesting final approval of the DZ rules governing Arkansas military child school transitions. Um, the state board approved these rules for release, uh, for public comment release pending governor's office approval on October the 14th of 2021. They were approved by the governor's office on January the 12th of 2022 and released for public comment. Um, comments were received and non-substantive changes were made. Um, after the public comment period, we did realize that there were, um, four small grammatical changes that we needed to make and they had already been uploaded to the agenda. Um, we just had, I believe, chapter, um, chapter six, title 28, instead of title six, chapter 28. We have fixed those non-substantive changes. I believe that would differ from the copy that you have. Other than that, what you've got in front of you is what we plan to move forward with and we're requesting final approval of the rules.
Okay. Any comments or questions on rules governing military child school transition? I see Mr. Cromwell back there. Thank you for your work on these and I know this is dear to your heart. All right, so we are ready for a motion? Okay, and motion by Mr. Henderson to approve? Seconded by Dr. Rankin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. All right, so we are to the revised state board operating procedures. Ms. Frino has worked hard on this for us and we want to say thank you for taking such good care of us. We, we appreciate all that you do, Ms. Frino.
Thank you so much. And I also want to say thank you to y'all who submitted suggestions and we've incorporated them all into, into these rules. Um, I just want to briefly go over the major changes that were made. There were some changes that were just purely technical, like there were two sentences. One talked about the, the chair, one talked about the vice chair. And we just cut out unneeded words, as Strunk and White would say, and shoved everything together. That was one point. But the substantive ones, first of all, is on page four. It is, we've always had a procedure that after nominations are made for chair and vice chair in April, we have to wait under the operating procedures until May for there to be a vote. We changed the rule, we changed the operating procedures to allow there to be a vote in either April or May. You know, it can be in April if everyone who is nominated is in attendance. Because of course you have to make sure that the person who's nominated wants to accept, you know, the nomination. So that would just streamline it if everyone is here that is nominated and we would not have to wait. It always seemed kind of strained and odd to wait an additional month before we, before we voted. So that was the first, the first substantive change. The second is on page seven. And that clarifies that a matter may be pulled from the consent agenda and considered by the board on that day unless notice must be provided to ensure due process. That was more of a clarification that we made to the operating procedures. Because as we've said before, like PLSB is the perfect example. If there's a PLSB matter that the board wants to pull from the consent agenda, we can't move forward that day. We have to set it for the next month because it would violate the educators' due process if we, if we did that day. So that change was made to clarify. And then on page 10, oh, that had to do with substitute motions. The rules, the operating procedures required that if someone made a substitution motion, that the board had to vote on whether to allow it to be on the floor even before it was voted on as a substitution motion. Really, that's kind of how we have treated that in the past. That's kind of been our procedure, not to have that vote. And so we're just changing the rules to make it consistent with Robert's rules and just with, I mean, even though we don't follow Robert's rules, we turn to them for guidance. And this is just a much more, a less cumbersome, more streamlined way of dealing with substitute motions. And that is, those are the big changes.
Okay. Do you have questions for Ms. Frino? All right, I don't, I, I think they, they look like they're good with that. So we'll see if we have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Rankin. Seconded by Dr. Hill. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Frino, again, for your hard work on that. We appreciate it. All right, so we are to the, is, first of all, is there any new business? Anything that we need to take care of? Okay, so we are to the end of the action agenda. So we're going to take, if it's okay with y'all, we're going to take a little bit of a break and, and give Ms. Sharon time to get her things up. And then we will go ahead and move through the reports and then have... Yeah, and, and move through the reports and then you can go to lunch. And then when you get ready, you could go home. So if that's okay with the board, we'll do it that way. Okay, so let's take about a 10-minute break and we'll come back at 11:25. Okay? Y'all have worked hard this morning.
Interrupt the conversations, but I think we are ready to go ahead with our report section of our agenda. So, the first thing on our agenda are the board reports. Does anyone from the board have something that you would like to share that's gone on this last month? Ms. McPhatridge?
Yes, I had the opportunity to visit P. Ridge. And I was there to see Mr. White's presentation to the district. It was really a fun, fun day. And then we toured the school and looked at their new innovating CTE program. So, it was a lot of fun being there. And the kids made a presentation that day, and it was, it was really insightful. So, enjoyed it very much.
Good, I'm glad you got to go to that. Anyone else?
I do. Yesterday, I did get to tour the LISA academies and those school campuses. It was a really insightful visit. I appreciated that very much. And I also want to throw a kudos to our Teacher of the Year with her Heart of Arkansas tour.
Yes, yes.
She actually swept through my hometown, made a visit to my alma mater, Magnolia High School, and we were very honored to host her and to just see the excitement with the teachers and students to have her on campus and to applaud our, the efforts that she went through. I know you could have had a much easier week than planning that trip. I knew that took a lot of effort. Your daughter Harper was a part of that too, which was a lot of fun. So, very creative, innovative thinking, I think, just to spread some cheer and appreciation for our teachers and students throughout the state. So, greatly appreciated, greatly appreciated.
All right. Dr. Hill, I want to hear a little bit about what you said you went to yesterday.
Well, actually, Ms. Kaufman? Would you come up and, because it was probably, Dr. Payne was brought in by every Arkansin in our outreach organization, and she was there and they're working together for after-school programs for emotional impoverished kids. And I won't let you, I mean, it was probably one of the most, I mean, I'll let you think about it.
Yes, it was super exciting. So, Dr. Ruby Payne talked about emotional poverty and did a fabulous job of presenting and really taking the participants into her book and helping us to think about why kids behave like they do, why teachers may behave like they do, why communities may behave like they do. But, the part that I think is equally exciting as that work, she really had us thinking about how we move forward.
Yeah.
With the type of culture that we want in our schools and communities. But, it was an opportunity for every Arkansin to be there to talk about what they do with the services they're providing and can provide to even more communities if communities know about it. Bright Futures USA was there with us, and as you know, those two organizations are partners with us in our ARP homeless set aside. We have put money out, we're working with our co-ops, through our co-ops with these two organizations to make schools aware that communities, community-based organizations, faith-based organizations, the schools, the school districts, the co-ops, that really everyone wants to help, they just don't know how to do it. And so, these partners are out working in our communities to show people how we can pull this together to really provide the supports that kids need. Those supports may be immediate needs because of homelessness, it may be immediate needs because your house burned last night, it could be needs that my family is struggling financially, and if we don't get mattresses in these bedrooms, these kids may be put into the foster care system. So, we're trying to work together and bring in interested partners into this concept of what it really means to be a wraparound service for kids. And I think Dr. Payne's message really helped us to understand why people have these needs and then what, how we should react to those needs to ensure that their emotional support is in place as well as their academic support, their physical support with food and shelter. So, it was, it's just, it's exciting times to be in Arkansas. I think Dr. Payne gave some great examples of places that she had worked where human services had partnered with the school district to ensure they were meeting the needs of kids. And I think she was kind of blown away to see how our partners have rallied together to work out in communities. And I'll give you an example. CJ Huff, our, the director and founder of Bright Futures USA was working in the four-city community. He'd been asked to come in there and help pull the teams together to build this type of community support. And because we could go to every Arkansin's website and look to say, hey, do you have a church that's participating? And yes, they do. And in fact, it was the same pastor that was bringing CJ in that is also the pastor of the church that's affiliated with every Arkansin. And so, sometimes we have things, but they're siloed. And we're trying to help people see, look, we've got a lot of resources. And then we're taking, Missy Wally's team has put together a resource list, a webpage that lets people know where all these resources are. So, this, this partnership of teams are out there, we're adding in those resources, making people aware of this website, what's available to you in your community that you may not know about, and once you know about it, now what we're going to do about it. Does that summarize?
Absolutely. She said one thing that just stood out with me, that, and I've been quoting it ever since. She said genetics cocks the triggers, but the environment pulls the trigger.
Wow.
I mean, so, you know, when kids grow up in those home situations like that, it's so stressful on our teachers today because of all the time environment that the kids is coming from. Our teachers are doing, they're trying to do the very best they can. But, when we send them home, that environment is, is what's pulling the trigger many times and how they're responding to the teachers, to the learning environment and all those type of things. So, I mean, you know, I want to applaud the department with what you all are doing with program, because after-school programming, as I said, sending kids home is probably the worst thing we often time do in a situation. And so, I'm actually been advocating not sending them home, to you all, to, in the programming that we have now, you know, I've shared with Mr. Poor, that I, I hope for next year that we have the after-school gentleman come in, our mentor from 11 to 7:00, and don't go home with them, do their homework, we'll feed them, we'll get them food there, do them extracurricular activities, bus them home at 8:00, let them go to bed and start over. Because what we see, the problem is from 3:30 to 8:00 in, in urban education. So, what, what are we going to do to facilitate that time for our most, you know, at-risk and impoverished, you know, the, you know, the impoverished mindset and emotion and poverty, this was leading to disruption, to disruption in the classroom. And, and I spoke to those athletic directors yesterday in Hot Springs at their convention, and I just said, you know, I, I think it's pretty amazing that AAA data shows that 41% of all students involved in extracurricular activities have a 99% graduation rate. Think about that. But what about 41%? What about that other 50-plus percent that's not? And then how do we get them involved? And I said, I challenge you, you know, to meet with your superintendent to see how we can get everybody involved in something, choir, band, you know, whatever, they're not, you know, football, basketball, baseball, but some type of activities involved so that we can continue improving the graduation rate and lower the violence in our community to be able to have these services. So, I want to applaud, I've been, you know, excited, they've been working and been meeting with them and, you know, trying to do something that can move the needle to keep students in the classroom. So, I just know, we just had another team shot yesterday a little run, so, well, you know, they're teenagers, so it's just, it's a constant, constant, constant that battle that we're in. So, thank you all for, for what you're doing, and I know sometimes it feel like we're not doing anything, but, but you all are, and you all make a difference.
We appreciate that. I will just say that this collaboration is not about schools doing more. This collaboration is about everyone in the community coming together to do more for kids.
Yes.
So, we're not trying to wear teachers out and say, you got to stay till 8:00. That's not what we're trying to do. We're trying to say, there are other programs, other people can come in and set up things within the church, within the community centers, within other organizations. We just need to make people aware of what's possible and what's available or could be available in your community. So, it's exciting, and we give credit to Dr. Hill for constantly challenging us to think harder and think wider and try to serve kids.
Dr. Hill is an asset, not just to this board, but to the state of Arkansas and the students of Arkansas. We appreciate him. Mr. Dean, did you have something you want to add to that?
I do, I do. I definitely appreciate Dr. Hill and his perspective and, and what he's done for the state of Arkansas and his endeavoring to do for students and families. But I will say this, I come, I guess I want to hit it from a different perspective to kind of echo what, what was just said about not, I don't, I don't believe the answer is keeping students out of their homes as long as possible. To Ms. Kaufman's point, it's about everyone working together in the community. That means parents, that means pastors, churches, teachers, students doing the work. So that if there are situations where the home environment is not where it needs to be, then that means that's something in the community that we need to work on. What do we need to do to, for, to help parents be better parents? So that that home environment is something that their children want to come home to. And, and so that we're not making the school and the teachers being there all day the solution. It, it has to be all of us in the community working together. If there's a problem at home, maybe that's something that the youth pastor, the pastor, maybe community therapy or counseling or something. But, I, I want us to be very careful about, and I'm just saying this from a parent perspective, pushing parents out of the picture and keeping students away from home longer and longer. I don't believe that's the solution. I believe we need to help parents to be the best that they can be, help that home environment to improve as much as possible. Of course, there are triage situations where we have to do above and beyond in certain situations. But as a whole, I think we need to be thinking about it from a holistic point of view of how can we make our communities, starting with the home, starting with the home, how we can make these, make our communities a place where our students and families as, as a whole can thrive. Because the base of any society is the family unit. If our family unit is not thriving, the whole society won't thrive. And the rest of the issues that we're seeing are symptoms of what's going on.
Yeah.
At the very base of our society, which is the family. So, I just wanted to add that, that we need to, I think we, we should really look at it from a holist, holistic point of view and see how, as a community, all of us working together, parents, students, educators, faith community, business leaders, how we can help all of the areas of our society be the best that they should be in that area. Home should be the best place, they should feel safe, they should want to go home, they should want to sleep in their own bed, they should want to wake up and have time with their parents. And then they should want to go to school and learn. They should want to go to church if they, if they choose to go to church. So, each, and, and I, and I believe we don't need to be working in silos, I, I want to reiterate that as well. We definitely don't need to be working in silos, we need to be working together. But we need to be working together in a way that each stakeholder is the best stakeholder they can be.
Very well, very well said. Mr. Dean, you have been such an asset to this board as far as keeping us focused on parents and, and making sure that we keep parents involved. And, and over these last years, you have been such an asset to this board and, and community on parental involvement, and I just want to say how much we appreciate that. And, and I hope that someone listening somewhere on the next appointment will, will think about that, you know, that making sure that we have someone that is focused on parental and community involvement also. So, excuse me.
It's been my pleasure.
Anyone else? Mr. Anderson?
I'd just like to add, February was an extraordinary month. I was granted the opportunity to sit on a panel with some extraordinary leaders, Jane English, Colleen Wayes, and also Dr. Chilwell. It was an educational workforce panel. We were talking about the skills gap, we were talking about the needs, really an extensive conversation about career of technical education. Along with that, also I had the opportunity to join Be Pro, Be Proud at LaVille High School, Gosnell High School, and also Umbrel High School. Be Pro, Be Proud had a large presence in northeast Arkansas last month, we were really excited about. Really looking forward to this technical revolution that's coming for us.
Awesome. Very much needed also, very much, thank you. Anyone else on the board have something you would like to share? All right. Sure.
Say videotape the panel where we could maybe watch that personally, do you know?
I'm afraid they did not.
I would have loved to have been there. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Any other things you want to share? Okay, that brings us to our Teacher of the Year report. Ms. Post, I think you've had an exciting week or two this month.
I did, and I'll get to that, but I'm, I'm kind of marinating in something right now. Okay. In response to everything that was just shared, I read an article recently, and it was about a teacher who essentially was asking, can I love teaching without loving students? And is it my job to love these kids? And I immediately thought back to the way that I launch kids at, at the end of my class periods, and I always say the same thing, be good, jump at the ALE so they know what that means. Be good, make me proud, and I love you. But I read her article and I thought, is that a requirement of teaching? That you love your kids? I don't know if it is or not. I love my students, it's different than the love I feel for my three children at home, but it is a love. So, Love Teaching Week, Dr. Smith actually challenged me to read, listen to a book, I didn't read while I was driving for hours and hours, but thanks to Audible, I was able to listen to a book called Educated. And it was about the incredible, unique, and extremely different life experiences of these children that were raised, you could say, out in the sticks, without a formal education, and in a lot of trauma, and the way that that affected them and, and their, their brain development, their perspective on life. And then, following that, I just started another book, which I highly recommend Educated. It was an excellent recommendation, I want to pass that along. But then I just started another one, and it's titled The Boy Who Was Raised as a Dog. I don't know if anyone has heard of or read that one. But along the similar vein, just of trauma-informed approaches to education, and reflecting back again to can you love teaching without loving kids? I, I don't know if you have to, but I do think there's a lot of work to be done, not in adding something else to a teacher's plate, but in helping them approach a classroom full of kids from a trauma-informed lens with appropriate expectations for the behavior of children who have been through incredibly horrific experiences, and the way that that shapes them, and what they're even capable of when their brain has taught them survival, basically. So, I'll transition now, but that's, that's kind of what I'm marinating in, just the work. I'm thankful that in Arkansas, you know, we're talking about multi-tiered systems of support, but approaching every child as a whole child, and whether it's love or not, just ensuring that we as educators are doing everything that we can to see them for everything that they are and give them what they need to, to learn and to achieve and to be successful. So, I decided for Love Teaching Week that I was going to try to see as much of Arkansas as I could, which I, I think maybe I overshot a little, but, but we did it. We being myself and my seven-year-old Harper. The older two children were a teensy bit frustrated, but I said, I don't know if you can miss a, a week of eighth grade and sixth grade in the same way that you can miss a week of first grade. So, the first grader got to go along. We saw about 30 teachers officially, saw and recognized about 30. And of course, there were many others in the schools that we got to see. And we, we traveled in a heart shape, beginning in Fort Smith, went up to northwest Arkansas, came down to Clinton. I, I have it in front of me, but I want to do a presentation at the end of the year where y'all see some of the highlights. So, it will be coming, I promise. The Fort Smith Board of Education got a sneak peek. We went up to Highland, down through Jonesboro, all the way down to Eldorado. I tried to say El Dorado and was corrected. Eldorado. Saw Magnolia, which was incredible, and then made our way back up to Fort Smith. And we went into each school, I had heart-shaped pieces of paper, and I just asked the teachers, tell me why you love teaching? tell me why you love teaching. And they wrote their responses. And I wish I had thought about this from the beginning, but it was really interesting. If if I sent the teacher off to her desk or his desk to write, um, I would ask the kids, what do you think that Ms. Smith is about to write on her paper? Why do you think she loves teaching? Oh, and they would get the biggest kick out of trying to predict. And and when you would hear these kids say, oh, it's because of me, because because I love her, because I'm so kind, this one little girl said, because I'm so kind. Uh, so that was good for my heart. Uh, I wanted to share with you, I asked to hear about their struggles teaching in the pandemic, and a lot of that was shared. But um, I had one teacher tell me these have been the best two years of her entire career. Uh, and it was really interesting just to see how the challenges, um, had kind of pushed her out of her comfort zone to connect with kids in ways that she hadn't before. So I really appreciated that perspective. Uh, that was a full week on the road. I was doing my residency with Walden University for my doctorate. So Harper and I were sometimes, you know, screeching into the next hotel parking lot, trying to get on the Zoom meeting for residency. Um, one night, I I had grabbed crackers and cheese off of the the hotel's happy hour stand, and she, I heard her talking to her daddy on the phone later, and she said, Daddy, we ate fancy tonight. I was like, oh, no, you didn't. Mommy just didn't have time for a real dinner. Uh, so that was Love Teaching Week. I'll I'll share more about it at the end of my term presentation. Um, my Arkansas Ideas course with, in conjunction with PBS, um, is in the works. I met with the creative team, and I'll just be real transparent and say that there were two or three educators in tears, even hearing about my my proposal for talking about closing empathy gaps with students, um, which I think is why I really resonated with everything that was just shared. And I was reflective on on the reading that I've done over the past few weeks. Um, but I'm I'm incredibly excited about that. I I'm anticipating that PBS and their crew will be in Fort Smith and potentially in other areas of Arkansas, getting some some onsite recording and experience. So I'm I'm thrilled about that. Uh, I've been doing a little bit with the state writing intro to education curriculum for aspiring teachers. That's been, um, really interesting. And maybe one of my favorite parts about this whole gig has just been working with aspiring educators, um, at the Ed Rising Conferences, um, and through some of this curriculum work. Um, oh, I already referenced this, but I was able to present to my local Board of Education, who I had not seen since this began. Um, and and that was, that was very interesting, um, just for them to see on a grand scale, like, what this opportunity really involves. I don't think that a lot of people, you know, really understand. Um, so, uh, of course, they were saying, now, you're coming back to Fort Smith, right, with all of this experience. Um, but yeah, it was good to be home and just to share, you know, with my hometown, what I've been doing. Uh, I was able to attend, also in Fort Smith, a flagship event for Capturing Kids' Hearts. And I don't know if you've heard anything about that. Um, but again, along the the same vein of social, emotional learning and support, um, it was two incredible days with some district leaders, um, and some other districts from the state were actually there. But, um, it reinforced so much of what I think came naturally to me as a teacher, um, why I think I'm the one sitting in this seat right now. But it was very encouraging to know that we are, um, coming up with programs that are going to enable teachers who maybe don't come by some of those techniques naturally, the tools that they need in their tool belt to be able to connect with kids, um, and ensure that our classrooms are safe and supportive environments for every kid to learn in. Um, and just to feel feel like they can ask questions as needed, and there's not the peer pressure. Or, I mean, honestly, even addressing bullying from teachers that I know we've even seen, you know, some as we deal with with licensure issues. So that was very, very good. I'm 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 an advocate for that program. Uh, following that, the Arkansas Democrat Gazette just did a story about what I had presented and, uh, announced that because I had was Arkansas Teacher of the Year, I was also National Board Certified, which I am not. So maybe that's something we can work on. I don't know that every ATOE becomes a NBCT. Uh, so we had to clarify that. Uh, I think because we do get that Master Teacher designation, that they somehow link that to an NBCT. But I I do think we got that cleared up. If you saw that in the story, though, that was a misprint. Um, I'm working with Fort Smith Schools right now to do a little bit of onboarding work for novice teachers, um, just ensuring. So we talk a lot about teacher retention, um, but I think that starts with making sure that that first year is a successful year and that they're not like, you know, deer in the headlights at the end of it, thinking, what have I done? Um, so that's been really, uh, really encouraging for me to get to do. Um, also in Fort Smith, I toured our Peak Innovation Center. So we're talking about career and tech ed. Um, they've got four big pushes that they're doing right now, um, information technology, uh, healthcare. Both of our local hospitals had partnered, um, and created classrooms to where high school students can graduate with their CNA or their LPN, which is incredible. Um, there was a room with, um, I think they're going to have eight hospital beds in there for students. It was just, it was phenomenal to me. So, uh, IT, um, healthcare, manufacturing, um, and because the building was donated by the Hutchinson family to the community, um, there was a requirement for art, which I love. So they've done quite a bit, just esteem in general, I think, but, um, to really promote the arts, which I was proud of. Um, and lastly, I was on a Zoom meeting just yesterday. Dr. Smith and Dr. Fetter and Secretary Key and I had already had some conversations around ways that we as a state can use ESER funding to support teachers directly. Um, the state of Nevada was doing some stuff with mini-grants. Um, so we had kind of looked at that model, but there is a group of of more voices at the table now, um, where we are just talking about how can we make this, um, as painless as possible, as far as required paperwork, um, with teachers, you know, getting access to the funds, uh, but also just making sure that it's being used effectively in the classrooms. Um, so there's, there were some really good ideas proposed. We're looking at maybe like some prepackaged grants, um, centered around technology in the classroom, potentially. There were lots of good ideas. Um, but that, that was just yesterday, and I'm here with you today. So it's been a busy month, even despite the weather. Uh, I told Fort Smith Schools they were not allowed to shut down on me for four out of five days in a week, that I had work to get done. Um, but yeah, it it's been a really good week. And again, have I said how good it is to be Arkansas's Teacher of the Year? The support is just incredible. Um, so thank you. Dr. Smith was very supportive in my my crazy heart-shaped tour idea. After the last meeting, I left with a carload full of books, um, and just resort, like, cute little coffee mugs. And, um, Andy Sullivan was also really supportive in pulling some of that together. As I'm sure there were, I'm sure there were many other faces back there that I didn't see. I just know that I came out and there were two wagons full. And, uh, I I said that I didn't need help getting that out to my car. And by the time I had emptied the that second wagon, I had wished I had asked for help. Uh, but all of that went directly out to Arkansas teachers. So, um, I just think I'm in the best state, and I feel very supported. So thank you to all of you for that.
Excellent. Uh, I'm just blown away every year by the things and the innovations and and just the ideas that our Teachers of the Year bring to our state. And and I think that, again, I agree that our program is one of the best in the nation. And, uh, we, uh, definitely reap lots of rewards from from that program. And we appreciate all that you did and admire you for taking on the challenge of of doing a Valentine's Love of Teaching way, uh, tour. So we appreciate that. And your your question, uh, about, do you have to love kids to love teaching? Or say it again. Do you have to love kids to teach? Not even to love teaching, but just to teach, right?
I think, and and this is me reading into it a little bit, I think that it was a teacher experiencing compassion fatigue, um, which I've also read quite a bit about, and the expectations to, back to what Ms. Dean was was referencing with, at what point are you a teacher? And at what point are you a parent? And and where are some of the boundaries in all of that? Um, I think she was exhausted. Um, and she was just posing the question, do I have to love these kids? Like, where is that healthy boundary between my personal life and my professional life? And as a as a professional, when I sign up to teach them, do I have to love them? Um, so it just, it caused me to be very reflective.
I I just thinking about my my own teaching career, I just would have a hard time thinking that I didn't love those kids. And, you know, I I, because I think that kids know, and they they sense, do you really care about them or not? And it makes a difference in your classroom, you know, i- if they sense that and know that that love is there. So that's, that's a very thought-provoking question.
All right. Anyone? Ms. Newton, if I may add something to that. Um, there was a really good point made, um, that there are different types of love.
Yes.
I think every student wants to be loved by their teacher. I can still remember my first teacher. I loved my teacher, and I knew she loved me, but she wasn't my mother.
Right.
And the the love I got from my teacher was completely in the the care I got from my teacher. I'll say it that way. The care that I got from my teacher was something I needed when I was at school. But when I left school, I still needed that love from my mother.
Right.
And we, and and it goes back to, like I said before, about, children are whole beings. We are, as human beings, we're a whole being, so we should look at things from a holistic point of view. There's all different types of love. In different languages, in in the English language, you really only have one word or, but if you look at the Hebrew language or other languages, there's so many different types of words that describe all of these different, um, areas of care or affection or whatever you may call it, love that you get from different places. And I think I think that's a really good point that we should really look at, is children need, or humans need as people, we need all different kinds of love from all different types of area areas. And so I think it's really good to understand those boundaries. Boundaries are healthy. They're so healthy. And we just need to really realize that if a child is growing up without parental love and time with parents and time sitting down at the table, looking at each other in the eyeball, and asking how your day went, they're missing out on something. They're missing out on something that is that that they need. Um, so we really need to really, you know, think about that and look at those boundaries and 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 the different areas that children need.
I'm thinking back on my own teaching experience, and I'm sure others have experienced this too. You could always tell the child that craved that attention that maybe they weren't getting at home, the the care that they weren't getting at home. And, um, sometimes, as teachers, we would try to fill that void, but you said it very well, there's boundaries, you know, that we are not parents and and that we have to be professional about. I think this was a very good discussion this morning during the report section, uh, from what Mr. Dr. Hill shared, uh, to the, uh, career in technical and then the empathy. It was, it was a great discussion and and very thought-provoking. So I appreciate all of your, all of your input today. Um, our Commissioner's report, Secretary Key, are you ready?
Yeah. I just wanted to say a few words first. Thank you for letting me sit up here and be a part of your your team today. I appreciate it. I also just want to acknowledge the department, the efficiency that you guys conducted today with the charter, the waivers. Um, there's a lot of work that goes into that ahead of time. Great job. The rules, numerous rules today. If you knew the amount of time and meetings they have for public comment, getting those back and forth, again, great job. Fiscal session just wrapped up. Um, Greg Rogers and the work that goes into a fiscal session when legislators are here, and the amount of time that his unit and department spends on that was tremendous. Gina and the work that she did with that, um, she's going to be like, no, but she most definitely right in the middle of all of it. Um, this last week, um, Ross and a whole crew of us and Dr. Pride got to go to, um, Seattle, Washington, um, to visit a school district, White River School District, which is a model professional learning community. And one thing that was really interesting was, there was no bright shiny balls. There was nothing, everybody was just, they rolled up their sleeves, and they were about the work. And with, because they were so focused on what they were, the outcomes, the culture was there. The care about kids, the conversation about kids, it was there. Um, but they were very focused, laser-like focused on what their what their outcomes were and what they were trying to achieve. Um, so that was really refreshing. I hope at some point you'll come back and get to be able to do some type of bigger report on that. Just linking to some of the other conversations, um, the community stuff that Deb was talking about and the work and, um, Coach Hill was talking about Dr. Payne's work. This, the department has set aside money, and we're partnering with the Out of School Network, okay, so Arkansas State University, on additional grants, okay, for community folks who are partnering with their schools to provide, um, opportunities for students to address any type of learning loss. Okay? But but we don't think of it as learning loss. It can be opportunities for enrichment, you know, how to plug kids in. But this is really great grant opportunities for communities to push in. And in our state, we have, I mean, just look at our our own state parks and the opportunities that we could be providing for kids. It doesn't always have to be in the classroom with books to say it's enrichment. Okay, getting kids outside. And so there's grant opportunities. You know, we talked about that with 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 Brian Miller with the OK Program, about how that could possibly be a potential grant there. So lots of opportunities there. Hope and Amanda are kind of leading up that work. So I think that's a great presentation for you guys at some point to see who has, who have applied for those grants and what are the outcomes from some of that. Um, also working on the Thrive Academy that will launch this summer, which is also is addressing social, emotional, and behavioral, and working with our licensure department on being able to give teachers, uh, an endorsement on their license for going through that academy. And it's about having positive behavioral support and meeting kids' needs. So that's another thing that we'll be launching this summer, and we'll be bringing that back to you. Okay? So thanks again for letting me sit up here with you today.
Well, thank you for being here. Your your input was very much appreciated. Um, any, uh, Ms. McFatrich?
I wanted to ask Dr. Smith. Um, Dr. Poole got away, and I I meant to ask her about this. She also talked about having a, oh, gosh, where are my notes? Sorry. I thought I was ready to ask this question. She, she also talked about having a social, social and emotional learning loss specialist working with her, uh, new teachers. And is that, did she get that through a grant?
So that she's probably using some of her federal funds for some type of social, emotional learning, um, mental health support. So we've seen a lot of schools reach out to partners in their communities and bring in mental health supports for students. That's most likely what she was talking about.
Really looking into that and coming up with a possible, what, specialist certification on social, emotional needs?
So they do, we do have some, um, licensed areas, but we'll, I'll get with the group, and we'll come back with more information on that.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, thank you for that.
Anyone else? Uh, Dr. Rankin?
I just had a quick question. And Dr. Smith, this is not for today, but just out of curiosity, because I heard this on the radio yesterday, again, about the alternative calendars that are are sort of picking up steam throughout the state. And I realized I'm really not equipped to speak about that if someone were to ask me. So just to put in your pocket for a future board meeting, if we could just even have a brief little idea of what the trends are that you are seeing out there with local districts and how that might impact our thinking going forward for a new academic year next year. Just out of curiosity, I'm curious how that is impacting your state.
Yeah, we can absolutely do that. And I must have missed my commencement ceremony. I do not have my doctorate degree, but if we, I can go get a robe, and if you guys want to sew that up on, at first, when she, when she kept saying Dr. Smith, I kept thinking, oh, I wonder who that is. And then I thought, oh, she's talking about me. Um, thank you, thank you. I appreciate that so much. But yes, we will, Deb, you want to talk about the calendar?
Yes. Um, school districts are required to report or make their selection of which calendar they're going to follow for the next school year during the Cycle Seven submission, which happens June 15th. So when we see you in July, we can bring you, um, a detailed list of who's selecting which, uh, calendar. And we do have four options, five-day, four-day, five-day traditional, four-day, uh, twelve-month year-round, or alternate calendar. And the alternate calendar is based on hours. They have to have a thousand sixty-eight hours per school year, which is the equivalent of a hundred and seventy-eight days.
Okay, so when we actually hear the term alternate calendar, it's not encompassing of all four of those choices. Alternate calendar actually means only that fourth option.
It is that fourth option. And, um, we do have a, um, website checklist. And we do have a website checklist that, excuse me, we do have a calendar checklist for schools to use as they're planning their calendar, which now we have a new act that's going to change the start date. So, we haven't had a chance to update that, but we're happy to send that out to Gina if you all would like to have a copy of it once we've updated it. It's helped us answer many, many phone calls.
And we do think there's gonna be more legislative conversation about this in the next session.
Ms. Swindle, that might be something that we could have a work session on one month, and then maybe what each one of the calendars involves. And then maybe if we have districts that have already tried some of these, because I know we have some four-day districts already in the state, and maybe we could get some data on performances. And then what, I know on the four-day, the thing becomes childcare on the off day. What are some of those districts doing on those off days? Are they doing anything? Are they providing things on-site? Are there communities that are stepping up, community organizations that are stepping up and doing things? And so, maybe we could, I don't know if you could get it together by next month. That would be probably too much to ask, but maybe one of the coming months, we could have a work session on the calendars, since it is becoming an issue that is, we, as board members, are hearing more about and getting questions about.
And it might be good in that same time to pair about the instructional hours and how that works, because that was the waiver that was so just all the discussion today. And so, just kind of pairing that piece together.
Any other questions, or maybe you have other suggestions on things that you would like to have a work session on in the future? Okay, Ms. Swindle's coming.
Not to belabor this, but just for awareness, we're gonna have a PLSB training next month prior to our regular Thursday board meeting. So, if you've got specific questions or things that you want to be included in that, you can email Amy Douglas and submit those to her, and she can incorporate that into the training. But then I'll also look at the work sessions as well, pull together some data, work with Stacy and Ivy, and we'll get something, Deb and her team, we'll get something pulled together as soon as we can.
Okay, so next month before the board meeting, the Thursday meeting, we're gonna have a work session on PLSB. So, it will start at 9:00 AM, is that?
Yeah, it could be 8:30. I just wanted to put it all on your radar. I'm not sure how lengthy and how much information there would be. It's pretty, there's a lot that goes into that, so she may want some additional time. But when I send out the email to you all with the agenda links and everything, I'll make sure to make note of that, and I can follow up with a separate email if needed.
Okay, so just to be aware, 8:30 or 9 o'clock sometime before the next meeting on Thursday next month, we will have a work session. So, just be aware to look for that.
We will livestream if we get more drive.
Right, we can livestream, or we will livestream that also, so you have that option.
Well, we have, since I was looking at my calendar, well, we have a Friday meeting, since that's Good Friday? Or no?
Okay, don't know yet because of the agenda. So, if possible, we'll try for one day, since it is Good Friday. That meeting, we'll try for one day, but it depends on the length of the agenda, unless you're willing to stay to 8 or 9 o'clock. It's, you know, it's up to you.
I am, but I don't, I'm just.
But we will try for one day. Any other questions or comments? Okay, do we have, did we have any public comments? Okay, no public comments, so do we have a motion to adjourn? Yes, wait, wait just a minute, okay. Oh, yes, okay, hang on just a minute.
Ms. Newton, are you gonna nominate the?
Yeah, that's what she's saying, okay. The nominating committee, I asked Ms. McFetters to lead, Dr. Rankin and Mr. Henderson to work on the nominating committee for chair and vice chair. And they will have a report for you next month in April. So, yeah, it is April, okay, these months are going fast. So, y'all three, they all agreed to work on that for us. And so, they will, if you have suggestions or questions or comments, be sure and get with them about the nominations. Anything else that we need to take here up? Okay, Ms. Freeno gave me that we're all good sign. So, we are ready to adjourn. Do you have a motion to adjourn? Ms. McFetters, motion to adjourn, and Mr. Henderson seconded, so we are adjourned. All right, thank you all for coming. We appreciate all you do.